Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is April 16th. This is the regular meeting of the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We will begin with a moment of silence. Hang with me, I'll get to the moment of silence. The weather is changing. We have a beautiful week coming up. I don't see rain in the forecast. I'm hoping that that won't change after the forecast has already been out for the next week or so. But it's time to definitely take a look at our weeds, our landscape, and making sure that we have defensible space. And the reason I bring it up is today's moment of silence is in recognition of those who have passed because of past fires. We experienced death during the Valley Fire. We experienced death during the latest cash fire. And what we do to create defensible space in our own yard and in our own community is not just for us, it's not for you and me, it's for everyone around us to keep all of us safe. So today, I'd like to hold those in our memories that have passed from previous fires, and please do your part in keeping your community safe. Vice Chair Crandall, would you please lead us in a pledge?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any extra items?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Anything from Board of Supervisors? All right, seeing none, let's move on to our approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items a board member wishes to pull? Seeing none, let's open up for the public. Are there any items that the public wishes to pull from our consent agenda? I see no hands in the chamber. Love seeing that many people in the chamber. And no hands in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are moving right along to our public input, 9:02 a.m. Is there any public comment from the public? You would have three minutes to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. I see a wagon tail. No hands, though. All right, we'll go ahead and close public input and go directly to our wagon tail pet of the week, Officer Kopus.
Hi, my name is Officer Kopus with Lake County Animal Care Control. Today, I have brought Chloe. She is about a two-year-old Chihuahua Wiener Dog mix. She's full of energy, loves pretty much everybody she's come in contact with. She does great with small dogs, but not so much large dogs. There's a service dog in here, and she's decided to start growling. But she was originally, came to us as a stray. Then she was adopted out and returned to us because she had too much energy. She'd be good in pretty much any home, probably preferably with smaller dogs. But yeah, she does great with everybody she comes in contact with. She'd rather be the attention personnel of the whole courtroom at the moment. If you'd like to see her or any of our other adoptable animals, we are located at 4949 Hellbreast Drive in Lakeport, or you can give us a call at 707-263-0278. We have a bunch of lovely dogs that are available.
Thank you so much, Officer Kopus. Absolutely adorable dog. I think Kimberly's gonna go to find out if she can adopt.
I hope so. She is ready to go. She is spayed, she's up to date on everything, she's ready for a home.
Thank you so much. Good luck, Chloe. We're gonna move on to item 6.3 or 9:04 a.m. Presentation of proclamation designating the week of April 21st through 27, 2024 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And if you are here for that proclamation, please come on up.
It's a whole process, reading glasses, proclamation. And here we have a proclamation designating April 21st through 27, 2024 as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Lake County. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crimes can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas too many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize and respond to their needs. And whereas victims of repeat victimization who fail to receive supportive services are at greater risk for long-term consequences, and the victim services community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective. And whereas the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office in Lake County serves crime victims daily, providing assistance and support for a variety of their needs. And whereas the Victim Witness Division, along with state and federal agencies, is working to improve services to crime victims and to enact laws that ensure fair treatment for all victims of crime in Lake County and throughout California. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of April 21st through 27, 2024 as National Crime Victims Rights Week and expresses their appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Passed and adopted the 16th day of April 2024. And I see we have Victim Witness up here, but... I see a whole lot of folks in this room who are also part of that network, and I appreciate your presence here today. Anyone want to speak to this?
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for the proclamation designating next week as National Crime Victims Rights Week. National Crime Victims Rights Week is a nationwide week where we bring awareness to the struggles that victims go through on a daily basis. And this year's theme for National Crimes Victims Rights Week is Options, Services, and Hope for Crime Survivors. Our office here at the Victim Witness Division, along with many other agencies in Lake County, provide services to victims on a daily basis. They all work very hard. Many of them work before the sun rises, many of them work after the sun sets, many probably wake up in the middle of the night with, inspired with thoughts on how to provide services to the victims. So if you are a victim, please reach out to us. There is, there are options, there are services, and there is hope. Thank you.
Thanks. (applause)
Sorry, I've made...
Well, you know what happens to people who relate, DA Cronus. Do you have anything to add about Victim Witness Week, which we just proclaimed here shortly time ago?
Yes. It's so important to, not just this week, but every day of the year, to keep in mind the victims and the witnesses out there that cooperate with law enforcement and help save lives by coming forward. So many times, people don't want to get involved if they're a witness. We appreciate our witnesses that say, hey, I want to help, I'm gonna talk about what I saw, what I heard. And of course, the victims, their bravery is amazing. Every single day, we work with them. And this group of people, victim witness advocates, are amazing. They create miracles. So thank you so much for the work that you guys do.
I want to add a personal thanks without outing anyone. There's someone in my neighborhood that was a victim of crime about a year and a half ago, and Victim Witness was very essential to the early recovery and now, a little bit later in the process, I continue to see that recovery. And it can be hard to watch in the early goings, but you can also see the growth. I think we neglected that Victim Witness is doing something nice for other members of the community in this room. It may involve food. Can you tell us about that?
That'll be happening on Thursday, the 25th, for all the service providers at our office. It starts at noon, just to show our appreciation for all the providers who assist victims throughout the year. So thank you.
Anything from the board?
Just a quick comment. I'm sure that my colleagues have had similar experiences as I have, where people are afraid to speak up. And even if the crimes are happening next door to them, sometimes within their own homes, they're afraid that it would actually be worse than what they're enduring. And the fact that these services are available to help feel more protected, feel more comfortable with walking up to you guys, walking up to, and being a part of the case to get somebody convicted. As you said, it takes courage and bravery, but without these services, a lot of these people would not step up. So thank you so much for providing these services to our community. Next, we have our 9:05 a.m. Presentation of proclamation designating April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Go ahead and spread, you're gonna have to spread.
If you guys want to come on down this way? Kevin, you can come right here.
Down this way.
Anna, you can come this way and start leading the crowd toward the area. There you go. Because else they're gonna keep going back into our offices.
Yeah.
Thank you all for being here today. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas in the past, Lake County Child Welfare Services received approximately 1,500 reports of abuse or neglect, and currently, 72 children and youth from Lake County are placed outside of their parents' home as a result of abuse or neglect. And whereas over 4.2 million referrals are made to child protective services each year in the United States for child abuse and neglect, and it is estimated that over 7.5 million children are involved. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, and all citizens should become more aware of the effects of child abuse and its prevention. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community to support parents in raising their children in safe and nurturing environments. And whereas current local initiatives to prevent child abuse include the Lake County Children's Council, Building Resilient Lake County, and a countywide collaboration, Nurturing Families Program, Family Pro-Differential Response, Prop 64 Family Wrap, RCS Wraparound Services, Motherwise, Positive Indian Parenting, Abierto Puertas, Motivational Interviewing, and the Strengthening Families Protective Factors. And whereas events scheduled for the month of April, including the month-long Pinwheel Garden Challenge, I saw some pinwheels up here, the Children's Festival on April 13th at Lakeport Library Park, and April 27th at Austin Park in Clear Lake, the Children's Memorial Flag Raising Event, the Lisa Project X Exhibit, motivational interviewing training, Stamp Out Shame webinar, child abuse prevention education through various social media and children's art contests where winning art is displayed on placemats and shared through different food businesses in support of Child Prevention Month. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors, Lake County of Lake, recognize the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lake County, passed and adopted the 16th day of April 2024. Sorry, went to the back. Thank you so much for that. All right, I have my notes here. I just want to thank you guys for, of course, presenting us every year with this proclamation. It means a lot to us and the community. We were talking this weekend at our beautiful, really warm event that we had on Saturday, where I don't think any of us blew away, which was spectacular, and I appreciate everyone for coming out to that event because it was a good one. With that being said, if you're out in the community and you see pinwheels, that's what we want you to see. So remember, when you do see the pinwheels, that is presenting our child abuse awareness. So we are aware that it is a community event or a community problem. So we are doing pinwheels. Of course, we have a competition. As you can tell, this county does really well with competitions. So if you have your pinwheels out and displayed, please get a picture to us because there is some prizes awarded we will be doing at the end of the month. So make sure to get pictures in. And just so you guys know, the pinwheels are a symbol for child abuse prevention. So they represent the great childhoods that every child deserves and the role that each play in providing a loving and supportive environment for children. So that's what we want you to see when you see the pinwheels. Those are throughout the county. We had our event on Saturday with the first one. The second one will be on the 27th, is what, in at, which park is it? Austin Park in Clear Lake. It will be from 10 to 3. We are encouraging everybody to come. This year, we are also doing the Lisa Project. Not sure if anybody is aware of what that is. But it was founded in 2010 by Jean Harden. And the Lisa Project is a unique, multisensory exhibit experience allowing visitors to hear, see, and experience the reality of the world of child abuse. It is a very emotional, very touching exhibit that takes place. It's encouraged for 13 and up, just because of the emotional things that you witness. It is happening at... Friday the 26th, what time? 4:00 to 6:00. Saturday the 27th, from 10 to 3. American Legion Hall on Austin Street in Clear Lake. So I encourage everybody to get there and experience that exhibit. And let's see, what did I miss? I think that I got it all. We are all wearing blue. Blue is child abuse prevention. Blue is to honor our commitment to preventing child abuse. And it takes an entire community. As you can see, we have our community here, and this isn't, this is only a portion. So it takes everybody in order to prevent child abuse, and we, again, appreciate everybody and everything that you guys do for our community. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to say anything?
I'm Kim Costa. I'm a program manager with Child Welfare Services here in Lake County. Child Welfare Services is the community, the local government agency charged with ensuring that children in Lake County do not experience abuse or neglect. As already noted, this is a community effort. We have our piece, but we work in collaboration with local tribes, with other government agencies, with community-based partners, with schools, with law enforcement, with friends and kinship networks, the juvenile courts as needed. We work to, through all of these combined efforts, there are programs to help ensure that abuse and neglect never happen by promoting the well-being of families. But as needed, Child Welfare Services intervenes to ensure that no more abuse or neglect happens, that children do not experience maltreatment, and we work with families in a positive manner to help them, to promote positive change. We do that by helping them stay connected with their families, their tribal communities. So we want to thank Child Welfare today. We have our piece, we investigate, we work with some of the most vulnerable families and children, but we just want to acknowledge our community partners because it is the work of everybody here that helps to avoid child abuse and neglect and to intervene when that's necessary. And so we just want to express our appreciation to the whole entire community that is working at this. And we also want to express our appreciation to this board for acknowledging this important work each year and for every decision you make and every effort that you put forward to support this work in the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. And thank all of you. You are all out on the front lines. You are the first line of defense for all these children. And if it weren't for you, we don't want to think about what would be happening. But all of these agencies and departments that are represented here, you are all doing the big work. And thank you so much for everything that you do and for showing up every single day.
Any other comments? I do want, I see a lot of you up here, and it's so appreciative because the number 72 is still ringing in my head, and it's utterly frustrating, it's utterly depressing. But I'm only hearing words. You actually see these individuals, and I hope that you're getting the self-care that you need to overcome the experiences that you have when you're helping an individual who has succumbed to child abuse by sometimes most likely the people that are supposed to take care of them. And so I hope that you're all doing well and that you have that self-care capability in your lives because it's important that we keep doing this work. Thank you.
I just want to add, self-care, yes, absolutely, but many people here, in addition to their work day-to-day, supporting our community, go above and beyond and see the need for leadership to build institutional support for the services and programs that you're providing. And so I just want to do a personal shout-out to Kim Costa and Councilmember Costa, who not only serves this county ably as a program manager for CWS, but who has taken the additional step of leadership to lead the city of Lakeport in her role in the city council. And I think we need to not only have the worker visa to providing the hands-on services, but also the people with vision and commitment to grow this community across multiple subject matters. So thank you, Councilmember Costa.
Another talker.
Hi, I'm Laura Sullivan with Redwood Community Services, and I echo just the thank you for the proclamation and the thank you to everyone here on the stage and in the community who continues to provide services to end child abuse in our community. I also want to send a reminder that awareness is just the beginning. We must also be ready to take action. So if you see something, say something. But I'd like to add to that message that if you see something and you're capable, do something. And one way that you can do that is to be a foster parent and open your home and your hearts to children in need in our communities. If you're interested in more information, please go to our website, redwoodservices.com. It is olive.org, thank you. RedwoodCommunityServices.org. And just a reminder that it is all of our responsibilities to work together. We all have the power to end child abuse.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much. Great work.
You're making a mess. I think tribal health is really increasing the competition over in Clear Lake.
I heard somebody else that's gonna say, yeah, probation might have a little bit of...
Did I get the whole bag of pins?
We are going to...
Anna, do you want your bag of pins?
Do you want your bag of pins? A little baggy with all the pins. Not much left, but... We are going to move forward a little bit ahead in the agenda. We're gonna go to our 9:06 a.m. item, presentation of proclamation, I mean, our 9:07 a.m. item, presentation of proclamation designating the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week. Now, we're gonna get back to that.
All right, I'm really glad to be able to read this proclamation, and the reason why, if you don't know, within the last year, we've had a really hard time and a struggle getting people to do the job of dispatch. It's been a very difficult time recruiting and whatnot, but the sheriff, along with the board and administration and human resources and the unions have worked together to try to figure out a solution for that. And so here we are, we're gonna designate this week of April 14th through 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week. If we don't have dispatchers, deputies have to do it, and then there's no one on the streets to patrol. So that's another reason why I like reading this, and I'm glad to be able to read it. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical professionals is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our law enforcement officers and fire personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact Lake County Central Dispatch Center. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the first and can be the most critical contact our citizens have, have with emergency services and provide the vital link for our law enforcement officers and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas, the public safety dispatchers of the Lake County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, treatment of patients by exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week in Lake County, and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the commitment of public safety dispatchers in our communities to preserve the safety of us all. Passed and adopted this 16th day of April 2024. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier.
Good morning. I'm Lake County Sheriff Rob Howell. First, I'd like to thank the board for the proclamation. As Supervisor Crandall mentioned, we've had some staffing issues in the past, still exist, improved tremendously, but most of our dispatchers are either working or asleep. So you get Lieutenant Wells and I today, who oversees, manages dispatch. Again, just a thank you to dispatchers locally, statewide, and nationwide, but of course, we're in Lake County, so I'd like to thank our dispatchers especially. I developed a lot of respect for our dispatchers early on in my training, a lot, a lot of years ago when I first started. I spent time in dispatch, and I remember thinking, I'm really glad that I signed up as a deputy because I couldn't do this. I wouldn't be good enough. You can imagine... You can imagine taking phone call after phone call, dealing with people on their hardest, worst days, panicked, afraid, scared, mad. They make sense of that, get that information out to first responders, to help people. They do it all while entering into a computer, and they do it 24/7, holidays, nights. It's incredible what they do. They deserve a lot of appreciation. They have that from me, and I know they have it from you, so thank you.
Anyone else have words? I will add to this real quick, and you can't leave without a picture. What I appreciate is the relationship that's needed between officers and dispatcher. Having a voice that you know and having a voice you recognize and knowing how to speak to each individual officer is important. In the past, there's been conversations, at least when I was in Clear Lake, do we look to moving our dispatcher somewhere else or not? But that personal relationship matters a lot, and the ability to speak to all of the public that calls in, like you said, with emotions completely at a high, being able to know and understand how to have that interpersonal communication to really get to where they need to be so that they can get the right information and pass that on. It is not an easy job, but I absolutely appreciate it and know that they are absolutely a part of the team in helping our officers out there to be safe and to do their job.
Absolutely, Supervisor Sabatier. And I can tell you, as a patrolman from way back, our security blanket, when we get to work and we know who's behind that console, it's just reassuring and gives us confidence, and they are so vital. You're right. Thank you.
Picture time. So, we will get back to 6.5 at a later time, not forgotten at all, but we are going to move forward to 6.7, our 9:10 a.m. item, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District. A, consideration of the cooperative agreement with Caltrans to provide Blue Lake Safety Project mitigation funds to support the Clover Creek Hitch Habitat Restoration Project in an amount not to exceed $246,492, and authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreement. And B, consideration of a presentation of the proposed project. Welcome.
Thank you, Board, for having us today. My name is Angela De Palma Dow. I am a program coordinator in water resources in the Watershed Protection District, and I am joined here with our Caltrans representative, Hannah Clark.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hannah Clark. I'm an environmental scientist and mitigation specialist for Caltrans District 3. We have an environmental team, and specifically, I work in the mitigation analysis and planning team at Caltrans.
And we're really lucky Hannah was able to join us today. I know this item had got bumped from last week, in which Hannah wouldn't have been able to be here in person, so it worked out for the best.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Does this work? Am I able to? No. Oh, okay. All right. That's okay. So this is going to be a short presentation, talking about the Clover Creek Hitch Habitat Restoration Project, and this is a partner project between Caltrans, and we've been working with Hibimetal Pomo of Upper Lake. And this work is supported by Caltrans, and right away, I'm going to say that Caltrans is not doing the work. They are providing funds to us at the Watershed Protection District to do the work or to contract out the work. And so these are mitigation funds, and these offset roadwork that's being conducted on a couple places on Highway 20 by Blue Lakes. And so the Habitat Mitigation Monitoring Plan for this project has a picture of Blue Lakes on it because that's where the work is being done that's providing the funds for the project in Clover Creek. The primary goal of the project is to enhance wildlife and particularly hitch corridors, and we're going to do this for this project through sediment removal within the Clover Creek Channel, invasive species management, and then some native plant restoration. And then, of course, there's always a secondary goal here to improve in-stream flows, and this will have two impacts. So reducing flooding and then improve levee integrity. You guys know this is a man-made channel that connects historic Clover Creek and Alley Creek to Middle Creek and protects the town of Upper Lake from flooding. So it's really important that we keep water in the channel, both for hitch, but also to prevent flooding impacts downstream. So right away, we're going to talk about what is mitigation, and this is the definition. Environmental mitigation process by which project proponents apply measures to either avoid, minimize, or compensate for adverse effects, environmental impacts that result from their projects. And these are the codes listed through NEPA and SEQA. And here we have a photo, and I know it's a cartoon, but if you build a bridge or a road, you guys can see how there's some encroachment or impacts to the riparian area there, circled in red. And so we have to offset those impacts. The bridge is there, so that riparian habitat is gone, so you have to replace that riparian habitat either in that general area or somewhere else that could provide benefits. And we do mitigation when avoidance or minimization is not possible. So in the case of, say, a road widening along a creek or a bridge building, you can't avoid that removal of habitat because you need to put those bridge footings in or you need to expand your road. So that's when mitigation comes into play. And then Caltrans provides what's called compensatory mitigation funds, so it's a requirement. They have to do this, and they do it through a pathway by working with approved partners. So the Watershed Protection District is now an approved partner, and then they develop a plan with those partners and agencies that will either enhance or recreate wetland or riparian habitat that'll offset that habitat that's been lost at the project site. And for Lake County, hitch habitat is prioritized, so one of the agencies that has to approve these plans is Fish and Wildlife, and we know that hitch is a state-listed species and on the pathway for a federal listing. And so anything that can enhance or create habitat for hitch is going to be prioritized and will be a goal for this compensatory mitigation pathway. Hannah, do you want to add anything to mitigation?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and this actually works well with this slide as well. So like Angela mentioned, this is actually being funded by Caltrans projects. So these projects you may have seen even today when you were driving along Lake County Highway 20 around Blue Lakes, there's a very noticeable traffic control happening. So when you go through that traffic control, just know that those state and federal dollars are not only going towards making sure our roads are safe, but also protecting the environment as well. And it actually gets to benefit a local environmental restoration project, which I'm always very excited about because that is the core of my work. But not only do we have the Blue Lake Safety Project, which is currently in construction, but we also had the Lake 20 Shoulder Widening Project, which is just a couple miles down the road. And so we set aside environmental mitigation funding for these two projects, and we pulled them together to combine to help fund the Clover Creek Project through a cooperative agreement. And the reason why we had this funding set aside is this was triggered through our CDFW permit, so we have to go through all of our environmental permitting for our transportation projects, and one of those is under California Fish and Game Code, Section 1600. It's called a lake or stream bed alteration agreement. And unfortunately, we had some impacts that were unavoidable onsite for both of those two projects, and we do as much as we can to restore onsite as much as possible to make sure that we take care of the stream and the riparian areas that are onsite, but sometimes there's permanent impacts that we have to compensate for elsewhere. So we were really excited partnering with Angela and the rest of the group for the Clover Creek Project, and we're also excited about potential future projects as well. CDFW thankfully has approved Caltrans to use the compensatory mitigation funding that was going to be used for our stream bed alteration agreement instead of forming our own project. They obviously, as a state government agency, they also see the value in supporting habitat for a state threatened species, the Clear Lake hitch, as do we. So we were really excited that we can use this funding to really help a very important project that's off of the Caltrans right-of-way, because when we typically do our mitigation projects, we can usually only kind of touch what's in our property line. So this is really exciting for us that we get to benefit really important habitat that's elsewhere off of the roadway.
Thank you, Hannah. So Hannah mentioned the two projects that are providing the mitigation funding, and this will go towards restoration in the Clover Creek diversion channel, which is pictured here on the bottom right, outlined in blue, and then the activities that are occurring in approximate acreage, sediment removal, we're going to do some habitat enhancement in the channel, invasive species removal maintenance, native species planting, seedlings and maintenance. And I will say that the amount of acre that we have, or the amount of acreage that we have to mitigate is 2.32. You guys will notice the total restoration acreage is 2.9, and then the whole channel area is about 4.5 acres, and know that the district is going to be matching some of that, and then we're really able to maximize these funds to restore that whole 4.5 acres. Oh, next slide. Thanks. And so the goal is to obviously keep the flow in the stream. So these are some photos within the channel, I believe, two years ago in like spring, so you have some low flows. But what we really want to do is, you guys can see, there's a lot of veg in the stream, there's a lot of sediment deposits, so all that space means there's less available for flow in the stream, both during flood season and then also during hitch season, and hitch have been seen utilizing this channel. And so we want to remove sediment, removal of invasive trees, the blackberries, we've got to get in there with heavy equipment, remove those blackberries, shrubs, grasses, and then do some stream bank stabilization once we remove all that material, and we're going to use some willow bark frames, native vegetation plantings. And our partners in this project is the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, and like I said, we've been working closely with Hibimetal Pomo of Upper Lake to make sure that the native species that are replanted are of cultural significance, and then we have some partners built in to help us maintain some of those species. Next slide, please. So here's an example of that extensive blackberry removal that's needed, you know, and, you know, it might seem like, oh, go in there with a weed whacker and weed whack out some of stuff. You can't do that with blackberry. It's gotten too big and too crazy, so we really need to get heavy equipment in there and dig out the blackberry and then the sediment removal. There's large sediment piles under and around this, and by removing the sediment, we'll make more space for flow, but also can remove some of those hardcore roots, I would say, for the blackberry. And so, yeah, that's the goal for these sections with large blackberry. And then here's just another photo. There is really some good quality stream that goes through here, but there's just not enough space, and so the vegetation clearing and restoration will provide more of that space for that beneficial stream. Next slide. And again, here's just that overview image of the project site. Next slide, please. And for context, this is what the whole Upper Lake levee system looked like when it was built in 1961. So you can really see, it is barren. There is nothing there. And this makes sense because it's to convey water, to prevent floodwaters from going into the town of Upper Lake, and to get water to move off the hills, off the landscape, and into Clear Lake as quickly as possible. However, this is, a channel was not made with hitch habitat in mind or any wildlife or fish considerations at all, and because we do now have a state-listed species and that's on the pathway for federal listing, we have to consider that anywhere that hitch will swim and want to spawn has to have suitable habitat. So we're not ever going to be able to get these levees to look like this ever again because this area is used for hitch. We also know that there can be some native plants that can help stabilize the shorelines of the levees and actually improve integrity. And next click, there you go. And to give you some context, that's what it looks like in March of this year, I believe. So you guys can see the growth that's in the riparian corridor there that provides suitable habitat for hitch in some of these areas, but does need some maintenance so it can maintain the flood capacity, flood carrying capacity. And this is just a cross-section of what the original designs looked like in 1961 and their plans, and the levees do not look like this now today. There's so much water that goes through that diversion channel that that channel actually has kind of been reshaped. And so what we have to do today is, with this project, is remove the sediment and stabilize the shorelines of the channel within the levees so that the water can flow, maintain flows during hitch season, but that we're not getting these large sediment shifts going on into the future. Next slide, please. This is a great slide to get stuck on. Okay, so that was the schematic. Here's actually kind of what it looks like now, and these are levees that have setbacks by U.S. Army Corps and Department of Water Resources, California Department of Water Resources, but there is part of the wedded with channel that we are going to be restoring that is outside of these setbacks. And then this is kind of what we're envisioning, so having some shrubs in there, particularly willows that can be useful for gathering for Hibimetal and Robinson, and then some grasses and some native plants and small trees that, again, will provide that habitat, that stability, improve the integrity of the levee of the channel while providing that habitat that will be easily managed more than invasive species that are in there now. When you plant with native species, you also can prevent invasives from coming in, so it'll be harder for them to take over going into the future. This is our anticipated timeline. We're going to, we have some permitting that is reliant on us finishing this agreement, and also there's some funds within the budget to kind of finalize some of those designs for permitting. And then in spring, we're going to work with our engineer contractors to identify exactly the sediment removal that's needed. I think we started this project like a year or two ago, so some of it might look a little different then, so we're going to do it now with funds that are included in the budget for this agreement. We are going to start sediment, blackberry removal in the channel this summer and fall, and possibly into next summer and fall. We cannot do that work when there is water in the channel at all, so it really is dependent on that channel being dry. And then fall 2024 to winter '25 is going to be restoration planting, shoreline stabilization. We have to do follow-up sediment removal. We have all that covered in a Fish and Wildlife permit to do that work. And then 2025 to 2027 and beyond is maintenance and monitoring. Again, we have funds to do maintenance in that channel. It's just have gotten to the point where those funds can't take on what is there, what is grown, and considering the benefit hitch habitat needs that we need to put in place in that channel. And then while we're doing this project and working with this agreement, we can continue to look for other projects to use Caltrans mitigation funds, so we're not limited to just this one project. And then these are the permits. This is really nitty-gritty details, but being fully transparent, we have worked with Hibimetal Pomo of Upper Lake to develop a cultural monitoring agreement, and so that is in its final stages, and once this agreement's approved, we can distribute that for final signature. We were exempt from Army Corps Engineer 404 permit because we are the flood managers of the levees, and so this is work that would normally be included in our standard operation and maintenance. Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board waived their 401 because our 404 was exempt. And then we have some minor, we have a Central Valley Flood Protection Board Minor Use Permit that's drafted, and again, is waiting for some things to be completed once we get these funds from Caltrans. And then our alteration agreement with CDFW is in draft, and again, is just waiting for some final touches. And then once all this is completed, we can file for the Class VII exemption through SEQA once all of those other permits are completed. And so all of this is expected within the spring, and I apologize for the details, but I want to be fully transparent and also let you know of all the permitting that is involved with this project and that we've been able to work well with federal and state agencies to move through this process. So I said that we can apply for mitigation funds going to the future, and this is a project on the other side of the lake. Anybody want to guess where it is?
I know.
Okay, Jessica knows. Thank you, Supervisor Pesca. This is Coal Creek. Okay, Jessica knows. Thank you Supervisor Pesca. This is Coal Creek. So this is directly like north of Soda Bay and Clark Drive. And am I able? Oh, yeah. So this actually is Coal Creek. Can you click? Just click next slide because it'll pop up the, there you go. So Coal Creek now has been, has been straightened and hardened. And historic Coal Creek actually went all the way around the mountain here. And pretty much whenever there's a heavy wet year, you see flooding in this area. And this is important. Not only is it flooding, it's flooding displacing properties, displacing livestock, pets. It's contributing nutrients to the lake because all of this land, the water sits then goes back into Coal Creek, flows into the lake. But anywhere you see water in this photo, there could be hitch. And so Coal Creek is one of the sites that Big Valley Rancheria, Robinson Rancheria, the county, CDFW are doing numerous fish rescues throughout the year. There's water and hitch found many times throughout the year that they have to do rescues. And it's because the water is not staying in the channel, it's going out of the channel. So part of this project would be to do basically a large scale sediment removal within the channel of Coal Creek. The vegetation that's there is pretty good. So it has a pretty good vegetated habitat around the edges, pretty good native species. So what we would do is just do a sediment removal within the channel so the water stays in the channel. And that's about 1.55 miles that's been proposed and approved by CDFW. We've already had meetings with Big Valley Tribal, or Tipo Office, and they support and approve the project and are, gave us guidance for our monitoring, cultural monitoring plan with them. And that'll be part of our budget. Much like the Clover Creek one, has cultural monitoring, cultural considerations, involvement included in the budget. All the local property owners, of course, support the project. Some of the property owners are also doing some of their own work on their properties using USDA funded project funds, replacing culverts, stormproofing some roads, making some roads taller, higher in elevation, things like that. And then this is a Caltrans funding priority, and I'll let Hannah speak on that.
I'd like to interrupt real quick just because our agenda item is specific to Clover Creek, and the presentation is on the proposed project. And I don't want to carry on in a discussion about something that's not on our agenda. So I don't mean to be rude, but I don't want to continue it where we expand into other areas. And I just, I'm feeling slightly uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you. We're just so excited about this project.
And I appreciate that.
Yes. We'll bring it back at another time when we get closer to that. Thank you for that Supervisor Sabatier. So next slide. So if that will take any questions. Again, we really want to acknowledge our partners, Caltrans, obviously for funding the project, Hibimetal Pomo of Upper Lake for working with us. They're going to be involved at every stage of the Clover Creek restoration. Tara for being partners on this project with us and others, and then Robinson Rancheria also.
Anything further? All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Pesca?
Do you want to go first?
Oh, I'm just very glad this has come into fruition. I know last year, we had brought it, you had brought it to my attention, Angela and Hannah, and we brought it to the Worth Group to show them. I think it was like in June, July-ish. But just glad that it's coming forward. Glad to see it moving forward. I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but this is a good start. So.
So my question is about maintenance after the project is completed. I know you've got MOUs with Tara. Is there going to be any ongoing maintenance after the project's done to prevent the regrowth?
Yeah, that's a great question Supervisor Pesca. So one of the things with the levees is we have not been eligible for, say, state funds because there is so much vegetation. But this project will give us a jump start. So then this area will be eligible for more outside funds. We have some baseline funds from the, the zone assessments or the zone funding in that area. So we have some maintenance there. It's never enough to do the work that's needed. So the Caltrans project will help us get it basically to a baseline, like start from scratch. And then it'll be easy to, easier to maintenance going forward. And because we have these partners on board with the local tribe and Tara, and we are going to be putting in native plantings that have a cultural beneficial use, we have those partners kind of built in to help us maintain that. Tara's goal is not to do just invasive species management in the levees. That's not their goal. That's not what they're out to do. But they will do native plant restoration and monitoring and maintenance with us if those species are beneficial and usable for cultural use. We're committed to that maintenance. That's part of the agreement is I think we have like a 10-year maintenance obligation for this. Five, five or 10 years?
It's five years at least for the Cal, sorry. It's a five-year maintenance and monitoring period that's going to be built into the cooperative agreement with Caltrans and the county. And that is a requirement that is set in our, in the Caltrans side of the streambed alteration agreements. It's kind of standard that once you do planting and invasive species removal, you have a five-year period where you look at how successful the native plantings are. But then, yeah, after that, like Angela said, it'll be a lot easier to maintain going forward with the partners we have on the project.
Pesca?
Are they also, just, just thinking, are they going to be doing any burning, Tara?
Tara, I believe is not during burning the area, at least for the first couple of years. But North Shore Fire District has signed on and being included in some funding plans for that area. Yeah.
Okay. I know too, the last week, Friday, Cecilia Agalacuri was present in Lake County at the Christmas tree site on Clover Creek. And they showed the work that the tribe had done to clear that area and showed how vibrant it was now and how it looked flowing and all of that. So hoping that this comes to that same, it's looking like it will. So just wanted to emphasize that and how impressive it was to see the water moving. And then I guess they have game cameras showing the animals coming out and using the water source as well. So, yep, just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. And apologies in advance. I'm going to try to push back up to that discomfort level you had. But if I read it right, this is roughly a one-mile linear length of channel. Okay. And definitely getting sediment out there would be hitch beneficial generally, but it's still a channelized artificial water feature. So going back to the maintenance question, like all things, it's, it's very supportive, but there's always a bang for the buck question for me. We're going to go in here, we're going to do a lot of work. And then the expectation, at least in the scope of the project, is for maintenance. But say we were to look for similar projects elsewhere in the county, Coal Creek, Scots Creek, what have you, that same expectation might get in there. If we scope up some really exciting projects, it comes with this implicit understanding that if we don't maintain these gains, we're just going to go back in a sediment and vegetation and stuff like that. So. So I guess I'm just educating myself to roughly remediate about a mile of channel, even a straight channel. That's a quarter million bucks right there. And that's with a bunch of waivers in here. To take a similar project in more private territories like landowners on Coal Creek or Scots Creek, now I have to do rights to entry. Now those waivers aren't going to be available. Now scoping the project and bringing it all together is going to be even more expensive because of that complexity. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, in theory, yes. One thing is that we have this relationship now established with Caltrans. So we can work on those agreements and there can be some inclusion of the work that's needed on those agreements and those projects built into the funds that Caltrans can provide. So they can't provide probably 100% for a project from start of, let's think about this project to last plant is planted and watered, you know, 10 years from now. But we definitely can, they understand the importance of maintaining, providing habitat for hitch. And so are willing to work with us to build in some of those planning and designing needs.
Yeah, absolutely. Just to, you know, kind of echo what Angela said, we, so Caltrans for, for each project, and this is something we considered for, for Clover Creek as well. For each restoration or mitigation project that's either onsite on Caltrans right-of-way property or off-site, there's a budget that goes into all of our projects. And it can vary widely from location to location. But the biggest thing is that we want to make sure that we include all of the components to make a plan successful. So that means also getting approvals from CDFW, who is really the core kind of driver of, you know, obviously with Caltrans, we want to make sure that all of our projects are successful because we, you know, when we're providing this funding, we want to make sure that the, the funding that we provide is going into projects that will work. And of course, CDFW also has that at stake as well. And so there's a lot of, there's definitely a lot of scrutiny that goes into this planning. And it's based a lot on past success stories of either past Caltrans projects or past projects with our partner agencies. But things vary from site to site on costs, on entry. You know, we deal with that a lot on our estate side as well. But for future projects, we are definitely looking to see, you know, how many projects could potentially go into funding if there was maybe a greater need for financial contributions to make a project successful. So you're right, this project in itself is maybe a smaller cost than one that's a little bit more complicated, either with private access or, you know, a non-channelized environment where we might have to have more permitting involved.
And last, less a question than a comment, I would, if the board has consensus, totally invite you back. Because I have additional questions I do want to ask. The nexus of the mitigation to the, the Caltrans work that provides the funding. So in this case, the Blue Lakes work is pretty close to this. Coal Creek, Scots Creek, maybe not so much. And so understanding the limits of your funding pool and the nexus of Caltrans is doing this, all of a sudden, five miles away from the nearest state highway, I'm doing mitigation here. I'd like to hear more about that. And I'd also like to hear more about some of the complications that may come with that long-range project planning. So if there's consensus from the board, just to get an overview of how we're going to be milking this cow, so to speak, in future projects and awards of cycles, it'd be useful for me, definitely.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I totally understand if maybe there's not time for that right now, but I would be happy to return back to talk to everybody, or if you have questions directly for me now on that. But just as kind of a general response to that, the kind of process that we use to determine which projects get to fund certain off-site projects like Clover Creek or maybe like Coal Creek in the future, a lot of that directly depends on CDFW's approval. So like I said before, for the Clover Creek project, our funding was tied to our 1600 streambed alteration agreement permitting with CDFW. And CDFW used, you know, kind of their own analysis on determining whether it was appropriate for Caltrans to use funding for these two projects, the Blue Lake Safety Project and the Lake 20 Shoulder Widening Project, to fund the Clover Creek project. And so it's, you know, within very similar or, you know, it's in a nearby watershed. I mean, it's in the, the total watershed of Clear Lake, but it's nearby those streams. And so that's kind of similar criteria that will be used in future when we look at, you know, kind of a total list of future projects coming down, you know, in the next five or 10 years. We'll look to see what watersheds those projects are in and talk to CDFW about the potential for using those mitigation funds that would have been used for those permits directly onsite to then pool to contribute funding for, you know, future project sites. Because like I said, both Caltrans and CDFW are really prioritizing Clear Lake Hitch Passage projects. And so we are definitely motivated to keep up with partnering with Lake County. And we also have local tribes that we're working with as well for their own Clear Lake Hitch Passage projects, which we're really excited about. So there's a lot of really good, really valuable work going on in the county. And yeah, we are definitely excited about the possibility. And yeah, we're continuing planning.
So I know that Supervisor Green asked for consensus. I, I'm going to offer a suggestion. I think it's very project-based on what the answers will be rather than getting an overview. So I would suggest meeting with Caltrans and getting, here's what I'm looking for, what potential projects is Caltrans working on that might be able to match up rather than having a broader discussion unless the board feels that a consensus to bring you back and present is a better way to go. But that's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I would agree with Supervisor Green, meeting with Caltrans. And if you think something needs to come back. But Caltrans has mitigated projects in South County also, 175 widening project, you know, replanting in the trailside park. So depending where the project is and the conversation's happening, yeah, as you said, project specific. So I'd agree with that. If you feel like it needs to come back after you have a conversation, then you could bring in an agenda item.
And my suggestion is pay attention to the Canuckdai Corridor extension. That is, we have the next three miles that looks like that's getting funded. Maybe that's an opportunity right in the heart of the area that has a lot of the concern for the hitch. And maybe that's a connection. So look into that. So my comment on this is, the past is the past. We have to deal with what we have here in the present. Yes, it is a, a man-made channel, not a natural flow of water. But now there's a whole town that has been constructed to exist and, and people's lives are, are there to work, play and go to school, and tourists coming through. And so we have to find ways to ensure that the water does not flood the area like we have seen very recently. So I think that this is great use of those dollars. It might be a little disconnected from where Blue Lakes is, but great opportunity to use funding when funding is available to deal with one of the problems that we're dealing with. I am also concerned about not just maintenance through 2027, but as my colleague also mentioned, for the next 10 years. When you said five-year kind of maintenance program, is that maintenance from today or once it's done in 2027?
It's a five-year total. So this is built in for funding for three years. But then as part of our agreement for that funding, we agreed to do five years of maintenance and, and monitoring of, of the project to make sure it's successful. And we have to make sure, you know, certain number of plants survive and if not, water them or replace them, those kinds of things. And like I said, we have some maintenance funds and tasks that we already do in that area. It's just there's so much vegetation and so much sediment buildup that it's hard to get caught up. So this will help us, give us that starting point, should you say, to make it easier, more affordable to go forward with that maintenance.
Yeah. And, and I guess in my mind, my, my greatest concern of all the efforts is with the drought we just experienced, the next time we experience that type of drought, all the work that we do in the vegetation to try and, and create the right environment and the right ecosystem, how much more work is it going to be to try to keep those things alive during those extended droughts? And also a concern for the hitch on an unnatural waterway of getting stranded and having to do more work to try and save those hitch. But at the same time, I'm thinking about the town. And I think that we have to, we have to support these types of projects to provide the resources needed to keep those people and those buildings safe from that type of environmental disaster. So appreciate you bringing this. And I really appreciate seeing this is the type of work that we can collaborate with Caltrans on.
Thank you. I could have easily put this item on consent. And I know that this is in District 3 item. But I wanted to present to make sure that you guys were aware that we're establishing this relationship with Caltrans. They're going to constantly be building roads, widening roads. So this is, could be a source of funding going to the future. And so if there are project areas within your districts that could be applicable for this funding, let me know. We can set up those meetings with Hannah. We have a list going. And yeah, we're working on that. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And that was the purpose. One of the purposes of presenting today was making sure you're aware of the type of projects we have and the funding source that's available.
I appreciate you bringing it forward. I know that consent, there's, there's a lot of folks in Upper Lake that have been concerned about this channel. And so to have it brought here and presented is very important. So I appreciate you doing the presentation.
Anybody can call me and ask questions about it, too.
I do have one question, one I forgot that I had. All of the sediment that you pull out, I know there's going to be tribal monitoring and it speaks to that it will be, what's the right term? It will not be disclosed where sediment will be placed if there's It will not be disclosed where sediment will be placed if there's artifacts within the sediment. But what do you do with the rest of the sediment that does not have artifact?
Yeah, so we have, the material has come from upstream or within the levee system itself. So we can actually reuse it in other parts of the levee system. And we work with the Roads Department, too, for for that material. So we're lucky that we, you know, are right next door to Public Works and can reuse materials. And a lot of that has been sourced from upstream on county roads and/or the levees.
Okay, perfect.
So that's the plan for now. Things might change. And yeah, that the cultural monitoring plan, as you see, was not included in the exhibits because it is confidential within the the tribe for sorting and identifying those materials and what to do with them if anything's found.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the response. Anything further before we open it up for public? All right, public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please comment up to the microphone or raise your hand in the Zoom room.
Hi, I'm Helen Owen, and I would like to just get your information, your cards.
Sure, yeah. I can provide that, too.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Come on up.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Staff, Caltrans. Happy to see Caltrans partnering. This is a very unique thing that has really never happened before, so it's super exciting. My name is Julia Carrera. I'm a resident of Upper Lake and an independent environmental consultant. I'm here today representing the Upper Lake Community Services District Formation Committee. You always see my face because I'm semi-retired, everybody else is working. And I want to thank the staff and the board and Supervisor Crandall for getting us to this place. It's been a rough path to get here. Praise God we're here. Yay, we're moving forward. The Formation Committee has the following three clarification questions. We look forward to get answers for. One, has a licensed hydrologist reviewed and signed off on this project's for impacts to flows and sediment disturbance transport? And how will that affect the existing channel and vegetation, particularly at the south turn the channel makes, which you saw up on those slides? It's about 100 feet from the west end of the project. And the confluence, just another approximately 100 feet from that south turn. There's a huge confluence with Check Dam, Boulder Check Dam. The committee is concerned with potential washout of existing native species flora and fauna. There's a river otter colony just south of the Boulder Check Dam. That Boulder Check Dam most likely installed to slow the flow at the confluence, as well as delivery of sediment and potential compromise of the Boulder Check Dam from impacts to new flows. The newly cleared channel will increase flow rates, and we want to make sure a licensed hydrologist has reviewed and signed off on the impacts downstream from this project. Two, regarding the sediment gravel that is being extracted and sorted through for non-hazardous items. As the Chair mentioned, we have the same concern. How will the remaining sediment gravel be disposed of, particularly Angela, when it's full of vegetation? How will you reuse it that way? Because my understanding is you can't if it has vegetation in it. So if it does, what will happen to that sediment? And what will be done with non-tribal or non-hazardous items that are identified in that sediment? The third question we have is regarding the mitigation plan monitoring. We also are concerned that it's only five years, considering, you know, what we've faced in the past. The Formation Committee did not see any monitoring for impacts downstream. We'd like to see that included, particularly flows and sediment delivery. And can that be included in the monitoring portion of the mitigation plan? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I know there were many questions within that, wondering if Mr. Palmedow might have some answers for that or if that was a little too much to be able to respond and needs to maybe an email response or something, checking it.
Yeah, I could supplement with the email response. Thank you, Julia, for that. A lot of comments. I will say that as a flood channel, it was constructed to handle large amounts of flows as what that were able to merge with Middle Creek and the rest of Middle Creek is able to handle the flow. So there's been many years where we've done, as the Levy Maintenance Authority or organization charged with clearing the levees, done similar work over the last 30, 40 years. And the flows have always been able to handle, the downstream has always been able to handle the flows that have been there, that have been. So it's not new flows, it's still old flows. In fact, the system can handle it.
I also just wanted to add, so one of the permits that we are completing does require, you know, hydrologic analysis. So the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, the minor use, the minor use permit that we are drafting, it's not yet complete because like Angela said, some of the funding that Caltrans will be releasing will actually go into the engineering plans to finalize everything, to make sure everything is up to standard. We also have engineers on Caltrans side that are going to help verify that we have a complete application. But that is also one of the main concerns from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. Obviously, they do not want to see any kind of activity within their levee system compromise anything else downstream or upstream. So there will definitely be, you know, experts checking the plans to make sure that we do not have any, you know, unforeseen consequences or any negative impacts throughout the channel based on the plans that are provided. And, you know, though that is not my area of expertise, it'll definitely be going to the experts at the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. It will also be worked on by the engineering team that's working with the Watershed Protection District. And it will also be verified by our Caltrans engineering team that's helping us out with the permits.
Thank you for that. And I did appreciate one, well, not that I didn't appreciate the rest, but one part of the comment, which is we're having a conversation about future use of this Caltrans partnership. We're talking about the impacts to the hitch. The data that you're collecting, I think, is going to be vital. And so the more you can collect about the flows, the more you can connect, collect about the impact to the hitch, I think the more that will be positive for future projects as we create more and more of these partnerships with Caltrans in order to get the funding that we need for other things. So I think that the idea of making sure that we have all that data, I think, is going to be important and crucial. So thank you for that. We have a comment on Zoom, Donna McWitt.
Good morning, Donna McWitt. But I fully support this project and it's a lot of work.
Donna, you're you're cutting out every other second. Is there a way that you might be able to find a better connection? I don't know if you're on your phone.
Um, I will stand to comment.
I think, I think it's perfect now. We can hear you.
Okay, I fully support or we fully support this project and future partnership with Caltrans using their funding. I think that Schindler Creek, Coal Creek, Adobe Creek, everyone would benefit from projects like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any final comments from the chamber or Zoom? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back. Oh, I saw you sit back down. No, please come on up to the microphone, please. I saw you stand up, then I saw you sit down, so I thought you were tricking me.
Yeah. Good morning, y'all. Robert Partita in Upper Lake, been a resident all my life there. And I border this project on Clover Creek. And thank you very much for your input here. And I think we're going in the right direction finally. We've got some people that are right behind us. And when you're talking Caltrans, I think we're moving, quite frankly, finally getting some positive notes out of this. Before, it's always been just, a lot of people just talking a lot of stuff. And my, my property borders that levee on the diversion and always get flooded in my garage, two feet of water. I brought pitchers in, nobody does anything about it. To enhance this project, the waterware in the back of my property, there's a slab where you dam it up so we could get the creek dried up, so we could get the project moving forward. Because the silt is two feet above my flap gate. So there's no way that the water out of my property goes into the creek. I had Scott DeLeon out there and he was amazed. He says, what is going on here? I believe I could speak for him that he was shocked that the levee is so, it's 10 feet too much silt in there. What are you going to do with all the silt is beyond me. So all right, thank you very much for the board and all of you. Hope we could get this going. I know it's going to take more than two years, though, especially if we just keep talking about it. I'm hoping we could get going in the spring. And the way we could get going is to dam it up and let the water go through town because there is access as soon as June comes around because that creek never dries up. So the way if we let the water continue going into Middle Creek, we'll never get this project on on hand. So my recommendation is dam it up where the water goes through town so we get this project going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that comment. I want to make sure that we're just not all talk on this project. So at any time, either the board or Worth wants to have updates, Hannah can always zoom in, I can be there in person so we can update the the town and the community on the progress and keep us accountable. I'm totally okay with that.
Absolutely. I definitely second that. And yeah, we're really excited to, you know, as soon as we can get our cooperative agreement signed by all parties, we're very close to having that happen. We'll be able to provide funding within the next couple of months. And yeah, get started with boots on the ground with the finishing the designs. And as long as all the permits are in place, you know, start that work this year, which we're very excited about. And I just really appreciate all of the comments from both the Board of Supervisors and the public. It's just, it's very rewarding and refreshing to see so much interest in a project that, I mean, it's clear that it means a lot to the community and to the environment. And so I just really thank you for the, for all the comments.
Hannah facilitates all of this project, too, so that's helpful for staff. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I know this is important to District Three Supervisor. I'm going to close it up for public comment and look for action.
So first I want to also.
I'm so sorry.
What was that?
Go ahead and speak, but we have another.
Oh, go ahead.
Just one last question, very briefly. So I know this is a distinct case from future projects in either part of the county, but public funds, private benefit comes up. In this case, we have a channel that's part of the Flood Protection District that does provide existing. But it sounds like, and no finger pointing, that maybe maintenance in this channel was not funded previously by the district. So this project is exciting. The 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 maintenance that's provided within the project scope is necessary to get that funding going. But it's also a little bit of a, just a yellow flag, if not a red flag, that when we approve this in this district, there's going to be an expectation of maintenance that goes beyond that window of the project itself. And there's miles and miles of other channels within this flood benefit zone and miles and miles of other creeks elsewhere that don't have the benefit of a maintained levee system around them. So is, not to put you on the spot, Angela, but you know, if 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 we're just going to be doing one-off projects that have three to five years of maintenance baked in, I'm excited about the projects. But it kind of raises the issue of longer term maintenance of this improvement and any future improvements that we're going to use these buckets of money to do. So am I correct in saying that we have not, prior to this project being scoped and brought, we don't have a routine systematic maintenance program for this channel?
No, there's a routine, there's an operation and maintenance agreement and manual that we follow. And there's some funds to do that, that will continue to do this. Just it's, like I said, getting a jumpstart on some work that has too much right now to accomplish with what funds we have. But I think the discussion about another, other area routine maintenance or effort can be a different discussion.
All right. So thank you again for the presentation. I also want to thank Julia and Bob. They've been resounding voices for the community at the Worth Town Halls as well. And so I just wanted to thank them for coming and shedding light on this. And so the hitch is another thing we were able to ride on this. You know, that's one of the things I've been saying at the hitch meetings with Chuck Bonham is, hey, this is a situation we can, that can help. And so it's good to see that that was brought forward as well. So without further ado, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District, I move to approve the cooperative agreement with Caltrans to provide Blue Lake Safety Project mitigation funds to support the Clover Creek Hitch Habitat Restoration Project in an amount not to exceed $246,492 and authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much for bringing this.
Let's take a break.
Go ahead and take a 10 minute break. We'll be back at 10:36, at which point we will take up item 6.8 and immediately move on to 6.9. Are we good to go, Sam? All right, let's go ahead and come back in session. I misspoke upon leaving for our break. We are going to go back to item number 6.5, Presentation of Proclamation Commending Laura Calderon for her 23 years of service to the County of Lake Behavioral Health Services Department. Come on up.
Come on up, come on up.
So here's the proclamation. I'll read through it and then I'll hand it to you.
Okay.
Excellent. Ready?
We are ready.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation, commending Laura Calderon for her 23 years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas Laura Calderon began her service for the County of Lake as a mental health worker for the Behavioral Health Services Department on the children's team on January 22, 2001. And whereas Ms. Calderon has worked with hundreds of children over the past 23 years, providing supportive services across Lake County, primarily in schools to our most vulnerable youth. And whereas Ms. Calderon has provided unwavering dedication to uplifting the children of Lake County as well as their families and teachers, the value and impact of which cannot possibly be measured. And whereas Ms. Calderon has been an example of excellence in service, consistently receiving above average and outstanding evaluations, as well as a source of guidance and support to her fellow colleagues. And whereas after dedicating 23 years of service to the Lake County and the Department of Behavioral Health, she retired on April 5, 2024. And whereas Laura will be deeply missed by colleagues and the community alike who are grateful for everything she has done for the children and the families of Lake County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend Laura Calderon for her 23 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the County of Lake and the Department of Behavioral Health. And we wish her good health and happiness during her well-deserved retirement. Assent adopted this 16th day of April, 2024 and signed by the Chair of the Board, Bruno Sabatier. So thank you very much.
Just want to be thankful because I've grown a lot through this agency. I used to be very shy and not wanting to speak out, but I've come a long way and had a lot of support for my coworkers in my agency. So hopefully I'll be going back into the community and helping the kids later in life if possible because that's my passion. So thank you.
It's hard to even find words. I'm trying not to cry. This is not a job. This isn't a career. This is a calling. And to dedicate your life to children and the lives that you've touched and how that's overflowed is really overwhelming to consider. When we talk about people making a difference, you are shining a you are a shining example of what it takes to make a difference in our community. And, um, I'm just incredibly, incredibly grateful to you, Laura, for all of your years of service and dedication to our kids.
Want to go ahead and open it up to the board for any comments?
Well, I, I want to thank you for all of your years of service and wish you, um, just a wonderful time in retirement. And I will be seeing you on the sidelines during soccer games and basketball games and all of those things with your grandchildren. And I really wish that, um, you have all the time in the world to enjoy, um, your family.
I just want to say thank you for coming out of retirement to come here today so we can recognize your years of service. Um, I really appreciate seeing that you have dedicated, committed so much of your years of service, not just to Lake County, but some of the most vulnerable of Lake County. Uh, that's where the impact truly spreads out and starts impacting others as they grow and develop and become adults. Uh, thank you so much. It's a privilege. All right, thank you. We are now back on track with our 6.8 item, 10 a.m., withdrawn. This is a public hearing, consideration of presentation of the fire mitigation fee nexus studies, and B, consideration of ordinance amendments to increase fire mitigation fees. This has been requested to be withdrawn and it will come back at a later date in May. Um, I want to check in if there's any comments from my colleagues. And seeing none, I want to open it up for public comment. Again, solely about the withdrawing of this item, not the item itself. And I see no hands in Zoom or anyone getting up in the chamber. And so we don't need any kind of motion since it's a public hearing. We can just withdraw.
And, um, staff would recommend that the approval of the withdrawal be done by motion.
Okay, appreciate that. Supervisor Green?
Just real quick, was this noticed? Um, are we going to go to a daytime certain? Are we just going to withdraw?
It's being re-notified and yes, it was noticed for this specific meeting.
All right. And you have to go to public?
Already went to public comment, looking for a motion to approve the withdrawal.
I'm so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Second was from Vice Chair Crandall. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to move on to item 6.9, our 10:30 a.m. item. Consideration of Presentation on Roadmap Task Force Accomplishments, Lessons Learned and Proposed Community Oriented Policing and Targeted Restoration, also known as Copter, for Nice, Lucerne and other shoreline area communities for fiscal years 2425 through 2627. And we have Director Turner, we have Mr. Beltramo, and we have Sheriff Howe.
Good morning, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. The item before you is a presentation or a recap of the two-year pilot program, Roadmap Task Force. This program was approved by the board in 2021. The purpose is to reduce crime and blight, to promote public safety, to enhance community beautification, all to improve the quality of life on a focused community. The Roadmap Task Force, when the board approved it, uh, your decision was to focus on the gateway community of Clear Lake Oaks. After it was approved, it took a little bit of time for code enforcement to get up and running because we still were right in the middle of, of bringing on new staff and, and getting a lot of the trainings done. And so because of that, we came to the board last year and reported 2022 as the first year. And so this year we consider the second year, 2023. We also really appreciated, um, the deepening of the relationship that we built with the sheriff's office. Uh, the personnel definitely worked well with code enforcement. Um, you know, rough patches. But actually, it really helped us to identify some lessons learned that we'll cover briefly in a moment. You have before you on the staff report, page one and two, um, tables showing the results of this focused work. And unless Sheriff Howe wanted to cover the sheriff's, um, stats, there are just a few things I really wanted to point out, um, to the board.
Go ahead.
Okay. Cool. Nine human trafficking victims were located and rescued in 2022. That's, that's crazy, just that there are that many. But yay, that's amazing. Additionally, in the two years, 100,000 or 112,046 illegal cannabis plants were eradicated. As far as processed cannabis goes, the total of seizing those was 20,352 pounds.
And Director, I'm sorry.
Oh, go jump in.
Stick you with our stats. I thought you were going to go over your stuff. Uh, and the boards had these stats in the past. We presented them a few times and like to echo a few things Director Turner said about the coordination between the sheriff's office and code enforcement. These multi-agency task forces are so valuable. To have all the tools together to work together is, you know, synergistic effect. Um, and it's, it's come a long way. So I appreciate that as well. As for the Sheriff's Department stats, um, we, we have a lot of them and you've heard most of them. Some of them that really stand out is, um, in 2022, 94 arrests and 2023, 67. That's just a sergeant and a, and a deputy. Uh, 44 firearms seized in '22, 60 in '23. Uh, fentanyl seized, and I've put this out there before, uh, one pound, eight ounces in 2022, but nine pounds and four ounces in 2023. I did a talk at one point, did some math on this with a DEA formula. That, that's enough fentanyl to potentially kill like 2 million people or something. It's ridiculous. Um, but that's a lot of, of dangerous narcotics taken off the street. Um, six pounds of meth in one year, 101 gram in the next. Went over pot, cannabis plant seized already. Um, and then asset forfeiture. We seized worth 114,000 in 2022, 408,000 in 2023. I know I've had a little discussion about asset forfeiture. It's one of those things where it hurts the criminal more than jail time to take away their money and assets. Um, so those are big things. They're very difficult cases to work. Uh, we have to maintain those, those items in light condition. So it's kind of challenging, but it's worth it in the end. And, uh, one more final stat, the, the street value of the drugs seized in 2022, And then 2023, 6,82,300. Big stats.
Indeed.
And, and the thing I pointed out with all these stats is, I'm not going to say none of this happens without the task force, but most of this does not happen without the task force. Thank you for your support in the past.
In code enforcement, each year, uh, we, the first year, 211 cases were created. This could be a variety of code violations. The second year was 196 cases. And to me, having that many cases two years in a row really speaks to the need of a long-term focus on a community to really make a significant difference. Uh, 121 of those cases of the 211 were closed the first year, and then 57 were closed the second year. And that goes to show the benefit of having a longer-term focus of code enforcement personnel because it takes time to go through these cases. Abatements, there were 32 vehicles evaded in 2023. And, um, if there are any stats that Marcus wanted to jump in and sort of illustrate, you're free to do so. I don't want to hog. Okay. Lessons learned then, moving on. Law enforcement and code enforcement, though complementing each other, work in very different ways and we have different timelines. Code enforcement has a, a number of due process rights, um, to make sure that are, that are respected during the abatement process. And all of those have their own timelines as well. So we are slower than, than law enforcement is that to go in and take action. Additionally, I don't want to use the word whack-a-mole, but when law enforcement goes in and cleans out one location, we frequently find the exact same players then just scooch over to a different community and continue the same activities. So in that aspect, having those two dedicated officers limited or focused on Clear Lake Oaks was sort of a detriment um, to, to having the flexibility to be able to follow these bad actors um, as they move from community to community. Those were two of the main lessons that we learned. One, that law enforcement needs additional flexibility as far as location and that code enforcement does well, um, is served well with a long-term focus on a single community.
Yeah, to chime in on that, we've experienced this in the past as well with the Clear Lake Oaks Recovery Task Force numerous years ago. Whenever you focus on one area, that is, that is a problem. Uh, people are just going to move. They're, they don't know you there. They're going to be in Lucerne or Clear Lake. So the freedom to move around and broaden the area is a benefit.
Thank you. Oh, Johanna, would you hand those out, please? Thank you. Yep, but I thought I'd give it to him and hard copy too. Yes, please. Oh, thank you. So in discussion of these lessons learned and looking back over the two years, um, staff has the following proposal, that we change the Roadmap Task Force and its focus for a two-year period on the community of Clear Lake Oaks and sort of transition it into the next stage, which would be community-oriented policing with a more flexible boundary, as well as targeted restoration by code enforcement in the neighborhoods of Nice and Lucerne. The board has continually mentioned that the areas, when we've come up with abatement issues, that Nice and Lucerne are in dire need of, of attention. So staff proposes then an extension of time, a three-year focus on the Nice and Lucerne communities, with the authority for the sheriff's office to expand their, their boundaries. And you'll see that up on the slide. The purple boundary is, uh, law enforcement sheriff's office areas, while maintaining a focused, uh, targeted restoration effort on code enforcement, which is that pink shaded area in the neighborhoods of Nice and Lucerne. Additionally, we propose, uh, housing our code enforcement officers within the sheriff's substation. Um, this would help to, one, create a presence, an ongoing presence in the community, as well as aid in the efficiency to, to have our officers centered there with the equipment that they need to, to respond faster rather than driving back to Lakeport all the time. You'll see out, the following tables on page three and page four are the proposed budgeted for the budget codes for sheriff, uh, code enforcement 2603 and sheriff's office 2201. Code enforcement, we've broken it down into everything we can think of that we're going to need to, um, to equip our officers for faster response times, which would include the rugged laptops and mobile printers. So they'll be able to issue, uh, their notices and citations without having to even go back to the sheriff's substation. Um, also, one thing to highlight is the nuisance abatement fund. That's at the very bottom of the code enforcement of $250,000. This would enable code enforcement to do abatements without having to take into account the abatement fund that is countywide. And then additionally, it would fund two code enforcement officers and two sheriff deputies, uh, or a sergeant and a deputy for a period of three years.
And for the sheriff's department budget, you'll see, most of the equipment we have, it's kind of what we do every day anyway. So it's mostly salary, the, the big difference being in this, we looked a little bit at overtime and we added that. There's increase in salaries throughout the years. The overtime, I think, is just necessary. You can't do work like this. That's not going to result in a late call, um, a search warrant or surveillance, that kind of thing. That was the justification for the necessity of overtime.
So the community-oriented policing and targeted restoration program just happened to have a catchy little acronym, Copter. So, um, that concludes our presentation, but we're more than happy to take any questions.
Supervisor Pyska?
Uh, well, this is exciting. When we dreamed this whole idea up, um, in 2021, this is exactly what we wanted to see. We wanted to see this investment in public safety and we wanted, we, I didn't think that we would see results like this. Um, it's pretty eye-opening to see that there's such a need. And we did choose Clear Lake Oaks because it's the gateway, but it was always the intention to move up the shore to, um, other areas that really need it. So, um, I am definitely in favor in continuing this investment. Um, I'm just wondering though, with the recommendation, are we approving this in concept and then bringing this back for discussion during budgets? Uh, so that we can really review what else is in those budget unions? I'm seeing some nodding back there. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And thank you also, I, I spoke briefly with both sheriff and Mariaa. And, uh, obviously the first iteration of this Roadmap Task Force took place before I was on the board. And I understand the need and I support, um, my, my colleagues in acknowledging the need there. But I'm, I'm just in this robbing Peter to pay Paul mode, um, that when we set up these targeted enforcement things, that is necessarily going to make, uh, less staff available for, uh, problem issues elsewhere in the county, including specifically in District Four. Um, and I also going to want to go back to kind of an ongoing area of concern, and that's cannabis enforcement. And we don't have a unified cannabis program either, uh, although we probably need one where the sheriff and code enforcement and all that can really get a handle on the, uh, massive number of illegal grow sites in the county. So while acknowledging the need in this linear strip of land on the North Shore communities and wanting to be supportive of this board's prior direction and the, uh, the plan brought here by staff, I, I wonder if you can just speak to that? Because if we're targeting enforcement in certain areas, doesn't that carry an opportunity cost of enforcement in other areas?
I'll talk about it from the sheriff's office point of view. I mean, ideally, we would have a, a task force like this in every community. That's just not realistic. And for me, staffing, if, if it was ideal, we would have some proactivity in every beat just with, um, a cover officer. Again, and we hope to get back to that time. But just because that would be ideal doesn't mean this isn't a good idea. Um, for us, it's not going to limit what our minimum staffing is going to be on patrol. Um, and we have actually even used our, our officers in the past that do this on overtime paid for outside of this if we need them. So again, you're, you're right in that ideally this would be everywhere, but I don't think it's, it's robbing us of somewhere, you know, robbing us of something somewhere else. Um, I do like the fact that it's moving around because that does happen as we spoke about. You know, you're going to get people, you're going to get an area saturated, they move around. But as this task force moves and has a little wider, uh, wider range, I think the benefits will be there.
Supervisor Pyska?
And just to add on to that, it was always the intention to not completely pull out of the area that we just ran the pilot in. And so that's why you see, um, the sheriff's office and law enforcement continuing to monitor there so that as we expand the program, we don't leave those communities behind.
Yeah, that was definitely the original intention of the entire Roadmap Task Force is to build, not create and move.
And, and I'd like to chime in from a code enforcement perspective. This will allow us to hire two additional code enforcement officers. That will increase our staff. So we'll still be able to deal with all the other districts. This will give us basic minimum adequate coverage. Obviously, we always need more, but we can now have one officer assigned to all the townships and all the program areas that code enforcement is charged with. So this is going to actually help us to increase to, um, deal with Nice and Lucerne, but also have coverage for all the other areas as well, so.
And we have recently, didn't we just get that grant for the cannabis? We have two code officers for cannabis. Um, so we do have two code officers that will be assigned to illegal cannabis.
And I would suggest also, in the numbers that were shared with us, with the number of plants and the number of dry weight that was confiscated or cut down, that these are community growth boundaries. That's a lot of plants in a community growth boundary. So I think that part of the, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Supervisor Green, but part of the concept of illegal eradication of illegal cannabis, illegal cannabis being eradicated, is more outside of those community growth boundaries, where there's a lot of plants and potentially environmental crimes, out more towards the national forests and stuff like that. We do need to focus on those things, but that's not the focus of this. This is about community. This is about creating a safe environment for our businesses, for our people to live and play, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. Those numbers are both fascinating and horrifying, all at the same time. And the fact is, we have to find what is the biggest issue that we need to tackle, rather the way that I've always looked at it when it comes to focus enforcement, is you can go to every beach in the state of California and grab a handful, and walk away and say, "Look, I changed something," but nobody's going to notice. But if you actually go out there with a backhoe and start digging into one area versus a little scoop from every single one, people will start to notice that that one area is changing. We need to have people see that we're making change. It's great that we work really hard and we try to touch everything, but sometimes when we touch everything, it appears to everybody that we're not doing anything. And we have to have those big results, and we have to have those large impacts, and we have to work where the work is needed. And I think this is exactly what we're doing here, and I appreciate the numbers, I appreciate the movement, the energizing of the substations is absolutely a core ingredient to this, which was part of the original plan. It's a little easier now that it's in Lucerne, that's the focus, that's where the substation is, so that will come to reality. But this is not the end game. This is only the second step in a multi-multi-step process to get to all the communities, and I hope that we are able to do all those things. So I appreciate what's here, I appreciate the work that's been done, and I'm looking forward to more amazing and horrifying numbers, because that means we're actually making an impact.
Supervisor Simon?
Completely support, you know, what's been presented today as we keep moving forward. And as we talked about when we put it together, this was expanding hopefully for the whole county. This is great that we are expanding. We're not there yet, but we'll just keep supporting it, keep moving forward. One thing I want to make sure, too, is that we follow up on the prosecutions of these folks. Great to see the numbers, but also having, you know, if they're moving around to different areas, and you know, they've gone from one area to another, that we're following up on the prosecutions, we're making sure that those things are happening, because we don't want them just moving around the county and doing illegal activity in other areas. Want to make sure we follow up on that. But the numbers, you know, this is kind of the vision that we talked about to start with, getting positive impacts in some of the most needed areas, and it's happening. So we'll continue to work as a board to get staffing. We always know that's always an issue, but every position we can add, whether it's in code enforcement or even in the sheriff's department, allows us an opportunity to serve the community that much better. So I support this project moving forward, and we'll see what happens when it comes back in budget.
Supervisor Piska? Vice Chair?
Don't go ahead.
All right. Well, no, just glad we're moving forward with this. I enjoyed meeting with you all about this, and as you know, I'm consistently, you know, looking at different things, especially when it comes to the previous Roadmap Task Force. I know Earth usually would have the presentations and all of that, and I know that it did provide kind of like a stance where they couldn't move over, if you will. And so I really appreciate that COPTER is like what it is. It would be going to the spots that's needed, because I know, in dealing with some of these calls and whatnot, they do switch from town to town, whether it be Clear Lake, whether it be Nice, you know, Cobb, Kelseyville, Lucerne, and then Spring Valley. Like, we've seen how they've connected in different areas, and Marcus, you've mentioned in code how that's happened as well. So this concept is a really good one to enhance and move forward, and of course, we'll come from another spot where we'll be able to enhance and move forward on that. And it just, I think it's a very important thing also for that corridor. I mean, for some reason, that corridor attracts a lot of people to drive through it, naturally because of the scenic corridor, but also the folks. I mean, you've seen folks come here and talk about the needle exchange and other things and all this other stuff. And so with patrolling, I know that some of the community, they know that when the patrolling happening, it's a deterrent, you know? And so I'm just very excited to see this move forward, and hopefully it enhances to where we have station everywhere, like you talked about, Sheriff. I know it's a lofty goal, but I think that's going to be where we need to get in order to keep people safe and feeling secure, you know? And also ensuring these people that are violating when it comes to code are taken care of in that situation to where it can't happen again. As of right now, it happens and then it just, it stops, they go right back in and do the same thing, they're emboldened even more. If we can surround, occupy, do what we need to when it comes to what we can legally, it stops that from happening again, heals the situation, if you will. So really optimistic about this, and I appreciate we're moving forward in this direction.
Supervisor Piska?
Yeah, and just one more thing, and you touched on it, is we're learning in our opioid community meetings that this is the drug trafficking corridor, and it's taking products from the I-5 corridor to 101. And so essentially, we're going to have a five-year commitment in this area. So I think that's pretty incredible, too.
And we did have a conversation about making sure to reach out to our district attorney. We mentioned a specific individual to invite them, we'll see if that occurs. I also brought up animal control, that was part of the original team that we had built, and just want to make sure that we're not just ticketing people or not just giving them a hard time, but if there needs to be convictions, we need to get to the conviction part. We're trying to change behaviors, we're trying to set a new standard, and we all need to play together to make that happen. So I have a good feeling about where this is all going.
Anything further?
Just an exploratory question. With the Roadmap Task Force, is there any way to tie the opioid funds, too, since it is dealing with fentanyl, other stuff like that? I know it's specific in a lot of those things for treatment and recovery, you know, all of those preemptive things, but I just, I'm going to pose a question today.
Yeah.
If any of the, during the opioid planning that we're going to do with those settlements, if that's an opportunity to, so.
We'll look into it, see if it's an eligible task or program.
That's all.
But I can't, I can't speak to it right now.
I think I asked that recently, and I don't think.
We'll look into it. I don't want to make a misstatement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a general question.
It's a good idea.
Being the task force, obviously, and the fentanyl that's been, you know, obviously confiscated, so just having that conversation.
I like the question. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? Please come on up.
Hi, I'm Helen Owen, and my first part of the question is, what is it? I know that your areas are overworked and understaffed as sheriffs, but I would like to see a little more, I know with the drug, down in South County, particularly when I've been out campaigning, I'm running for District One Supervisor. When I've been out campaigning there, I've heard a lot of issues with the Twin Lakes area, and some attention in that area as well. I know we're doing a corridor, but I would like to see, you know, kind of bring that to your attention, to put it on your radar.
It's on the radar.
It's on the radar? Good.
Thank you. And we have two hands in Zoom, now three. We'll start with Donna.
And Marcus, I know that you're involved with Twin Lakes a lot down there. We've been focusing on that area, so you can talk about it.
Yeah, we're involved in Twin Lakes. Most of it's cannabis-related. We have a few properties that just erected hoop houses, and as soon as they erected, we were on them, and now they've taken them down. We're doing a meeting with the local water district down there to kind of see if there's a relationship there that we can form to help do this. But Twin Lakes is an area that we've identified. We were sat there for a substandard property yesterday as well, so that is on our radar as well.
It has been for a few years, so.
It has been.
We've really picked up in that area, so appreciate all the hard work you guys do.
Thank you for that. Donna Makowitz on Zoom?
Donna Makowitz from Clear Lake Oaks, Keys. Our 823 property owners have really benefited from and appreciate everything, especially the communications with the Roadmap Task Force. This has made a great impact, not just in our subdivision, but throughout the Earth area, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Jonathan Cronin?
I live in Nice, and I would love to see the task force implemented in Nice and Lucerne. On Hudson Avenue in Nice, we have been dealing with meth and heroin and fentanyl sales for the last six years. We have constant drug traffic and usage. Most of the customers who frequent these meth houses are felons. They bring stolen cars, motorcycles, motorhomes, bicycles, tools, and other stolen goods to our neighborhood. Every person in this neighborhood has been negatively impacted by the meth and fentanyl sales. Most of the residents in the neighborhood have been a victim of property crime. We are all woken up nightly from nonstop drug traffic. Everyone in Lake County sees the blight in abandoned cars around the county. This is a byproduct of allowing meth houses to thrive. If we want to truly clean up the community, we need to focus on the meth, heroin, and fentanyl dealers. It's not like these meth houses are hard to find. They sell it out in the open. The meth houses are safe havens for felons. The felons know that they can sell stolen goods and drugs without consequences. I have lived in Nice since 1979, and I've called Lake County home for the majority of my life. Lake County has always had a meth problem, but it was somewhat low-key, now it's blatant. The parks in Nice are filled with homeless meth addicts. This is a major deterrent for our tourism industry. Meth addicts hang out near the boat ramps, looking for victims to target. Keeling Park and Henman Park in Nice have turned into a junkie's paradise. Nice desperately needs some attention from law enforcement and code enforcement. One of the meth houses on Hudson is selling meth from a red-tagged unit and a yellow-tagged unit on the property. The residents of Hudson feel the county has abandoned us. Please do more to make our community livable again. Also with District Four, they have the Lakeport PD and the sheriff's office. In District Three, we are 100% reliant just on a sheriff's office. So hopefully, we do see some change in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Jennifer Denham?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I would just like to, I'm liking all, everything that I'm hearing here today. I have to concur with everything that Mr. Cronin said. I would just like to remind code enforcement, Mr. Beltramo, and the sheriff's department that this community is on your side, that we have made numerous calls, and now I understand about the lack of staff. We just want to see that follow-through, and I see that we're going to be getting that now, and that makes me really happy. So I just want to say thank you, and a special thank you to Supervisor Eddie Candel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see no further hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the board chambers, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
All right, so I will go ahead and move to approve in concept the three-year community-oriented, oriented, sorry, policing and targeted restoration COPTER program and direct staff to include the program within the fiscal year 2024, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27, budget unit 2603 and 2201.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much for all the work you guys are doing to change in communities.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take up item 6.10, our 11:00 AM item, consideration of an agreement between the County of Lake and Placeworks in a not-to-exceed amount of $253,520 for Lake County Housing Action and Implementation Plan Consulting Services. And Ms. Judd, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. Lisa Judd, Deputy County Administrative Officer of Housing. Sorry, here we go. Following a highly competitive consultant selection process, administration is pleased to present for consideration an agreement with Placeworks to develop a housing action and implementation plan for Lake County. This agreement is in a not-to-exceed amount of $253,520. Staff recommends your board approve this agreement and authorize the chair to sign. If it pleases your board, Nicole West of Placeworks is here via Zoom to make a brief presentation on what comes next. Nicole West, welcome, and thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, I'm very happy to be here today. I will share my screen now. Okay, here we go. Can you see the introduction slide?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I'm Nicole West, thank you, Lisa, for the introduction. I'm a senior associate with Placeworks, and I've been with Placeworks for over five years. On behalf of the housing team and Placeworks as a whole, I just want to say how excited we are about this project, and we really commend the county for being proactive about such an important topic. I understand that you're working with some of my colleagues on the general plan update, and you may have seen this slide before, but I think it's a good place to start with highlighting some of our core values. We really do think about systems when we come in and help a community, and we have the benefit of so many technical experts on our team so that we can make sure that we are getting expert advice about any particular subtopic that's affecting the work, and really think comprehensively about all of the different interrelated parts that make up a community. Collaboration is super important to us, right from the beginning of the project, so that we make sure that we're hearing from a wide selection of community members, especially segments of the community that have been historically underrepresented. Collaboration is very important to us when we work with our clients, because making policies and plans, the most important thing is that it's going to be able to be implemented, and that it really is a good fit for the community, and so we work closely with all of our clients to make sure we achieve that vision. And then finally, adaptation as a core value is really important as well. The world is shifting constantly with new challenges and new laws, but also new opportunities, and that's what's really exciting about working in this field, so we bring that to our work as well. So in particular, for the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, the objectives are to get input about Lake County's housing issues from a wide range of community members. We want to identify unmet housing needs, and that could be types of housing, also programs and services. And we also will identify constraints on housing. This is also going to be a variety of types of constraints. It could be related to what you can build where, or what the process is for getting a development approved, but it also will look at market constraints and a variety of other types of constraints. We will identify suitable sites for housing, and this is another place where it's really a benefit to continue to work with Placeworks, because we have a wonderful GIS team, that's geographic information systems, and that's all of the mapping and geographically tied data analysis, and we've been building a lot of those resources for the general plan update that we'll be able to leverage. Another objective of this plan is to develop concrete actions to increase the production and preservation of housing. And then also importantly, this will lay a foundation for the upcoming housing element update. This also brings up a question that you're probably wondering, which is, how does this relate to the general plan update work that's in process? So I made this quick little diagram, and under the heading of general plan, you can see there the required topics that California state law mandates. The housing element in particular is updated on a more aggressive schedule, more frequently typically than the other elements, and it also is subject to a whole suite of additional laws that the rest of the general plan is not subject to. So there's a lot that goes into it. In particular, for the county's general plan update process, the countywide elements and the local area plans are being updated to address all the required topics, and then I understand you're also benefiting from our wonderful climate team and getting a climate adaptation plan as well, and then, of course, all of these documents require environmental review as well. So you can see the Housing Action and Implementation Plan is in a bubble kind of set off to the side, because it isn't part of the required general plan update, but there is a lot of value in looking at housing strategically and being proactive about considering all those things that I talked about with the all those things that I talked about with the needs and the constraints, and then coming up with solutions. And that's really going to help the county when the update process, the housing element update process, comes up in the next couple of years. So this is the work plan and schedule, which was really based off of the county's needs that were in the request for proposals. We think that we can do this in eight months, which is a somewhat assertive schedule because it's really important to us that we make sure we're listening to all the different voices of the community. We understand how geographically dispersed Lake County is, and we're really excited about being able to get input from a lot of different people throughout the county. And so it really does take time to make sure we're listening and we're processing that information, and then we're coming back with ideas and checking to make sure that those ideas reflect the needs of the community. And then also, like I mentioned, working closely with staff to make sure that we're developing ideas that are going to be actionable. So you can see here that we've got all of our tasks laid out, and it does also include coming back before the Board of Supervisors after we have a draft plan that you've been able to look at so that we make sure that we get your feedback as well, and we incorporate that into the plan. Yeah, and so I know I was asked to do a short presentation. I don't want to go on too long, but I'm really happy to take any kind of questions that you might have.
Supervisor Pyska?
Well, I really appreciate this presentation. I'm really excited to get it going. But I'm looking at yet more community meetings, and we have so many scheduled. And is there a way that we could sort of consolidate or combine with some of the existing meetings that we already have going on? So that we don't burn each other out.
I think it's a fair question, and I know that Maria and I did have a brief conversation about, let's see if we can synchronize these. We want community feedback, and we certainly don't want community to be burned out on, you know, too much. So we will definitely work together to see if we can make that happen.
Great, thank you.
Director Turner, did you want to add to that?
I'm already trying to think of ideas. So it looks like with the community meetings, we don't want to make people confused regarding the Lake County 2050 Community Workshops versus this new project as well. But I think we can integrate maybe some, maybe we can activate the LAPAX, the Local Advisory, no, Local Area Plan Advisory Councils a little earlier than before and use them as sort of a springboard to gather more public input during the timeframe that matches this one. But we'll keep brainstorming. I think it'll go smoother for the public if we're all synchronized as we're going forward.
I definitely agree with that, and that's why we made sure to include Task 2.1, which is coming up with the Community Engagement Plan to develop this strategy to address those concerns as well as just to make sure that we're going into this process having thought through exactly what it should look like. So that will be one of the very first things that we dive into is developing what that plan will be for community engagement.
Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Three broad questions in no particular order. If I can just get the 30-second elevator speech. Housing Action and Implementation Plan is distinct from a general plan, probably has some distinct uses in trying to get grants and take future things. But if you could speak to just what is a Housing Action and Implementation Plan? Why do we need one when we've got several general plan and area plan updates going already? Number two, in the proposal, I see that there were optional deliverables that would include analysis of Clear Lake and Lakeport's regulations and policies. We may end up studying them anyway, just for the county HAIPE. But I'm wondering if we did any outreach to the cities? If there's any synergies we can get with their planning processes? If they need an HAIPE and don't have one on the shelf handy, what can we do to make sure we do this lift together? And last and probably least, I don't see any specific discussion in the proposal about analyzing impacts of the growth of short-term rental housing within our existing housing stock. But I'm very curious about that subject. And if there's any detail that could be added, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So by doing a Housing Action and Implementation Plan separately from your housing element or from the other general plan elements, it really provides you the opportunity to direct this process because it isn't governed by any kind of state laws, although this process will set you up for compliance with state laws when it comes to updating your housing element. But this is really a chance for Lake County to explore all of its issues and concerns and take time to gather input from a variety of different sources. There is a lot of overlap with the housing element. Definitely, it's going to provide a lot of analysis that will be usable in the housing element, and it will be a springboard for the housing element as far as having identified goals and strategies for addressing housing needs. And then your second question about synergy with Lakeport and Clear Lake? Yes, that was something that we were really thinking a lot about, and one of the reasons why I am eager to get into this process and learn more from Lisa and from your staff there and find out all the ways that we can look for that synergy.
And I just wanted to add that-
And then the short-term rentals? Yes, that is-
I just wanted to add in there that I did speak with Clear Lake. Alan Flora and Kevin Ingram are aware of this process and were part of the selection.
And Nicole, we didn't get your last statement. Just wanted to give you the chance to repeat that.
Sure, the short-term rentals, that's definitely a topic we can delve into and come back to with more research and data and ideas about how to address your concerns.
No, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the comment from Supervisor Green. It's definitely a known struggle within our housing stock when it comes to short-term rentals because it just takes one out of the stock, becomes more of a commercial unit than a residential unit, and so that creates other issues. So I think paying attention to that and having it within our plan on how to handle them and what needs to be done, I think, is important. I appreciate the connections already made to the City of Clear Lake and City of Lakeport. I know we had spoke about this, that our housing perspective and plan is going to be a countywide plan, not an unincorporated plan. And I think that's how we're going to be successful in what it is that we're planning to do. We have to work together on this. Supervisor Green?
Quick follow-up. If they participated in the selection committee, so as scoped, did they express interest in having these optional deliverables in the county proposal include the cities, or did this subject came up?
We didn't speak about that specifically. They're just aware of it. But they know that we're looking at a comprehensive entire county, and they seem supportive of that. But I don't want to speak on their behalf. As far as the short-term rental, I completely agree with you. We're looking at the full spectrum of housing, all the challenges, the gaps, and how, even more importantly, to find solutions to those issues.
Okay, so just to clarify, as it's presented for approval today, the optional deliverables involving the cities is not included in the scope of work?
We did include that as what we were presenting today.
All right.
Include Clear Lake and Lakeport as a full county comprehensive study.
And we'll need subsequent action from the cities to formally buy in?
I guess, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
That's because we're paying for the contract. This is our contract, not theirs. They're just a partner.
Right, and I didn't hear any concerns against that at all.
CAO Parker?
Yes, I have one very important aspect of this strategic plan is the fact that it's going to provide Lisa and the team a handbook, a playbook, on how to move forward once we assess and determine the path forward. So it's a very important piece of the puzzle. Is how do we do it? And what are the steps and tasks to complete in order to accomplish our goals?
Thank you. I 100% agree. I mean, we can figure out where the problems are, but without solutions, that's not as meaningful for our communities. Housing's such a, you know, foundation for our communities and their health and thriving. It's very exciting to be able to do this with Placeworks. They've already begun the momentum. I think that we can work together to make this an efficient way to find solutions. And I appreciate you listening to this presentation. And hopefully, we can find the most optimal solutions to help our communities.
Absolutely. Any other comments? I do want to mention something. So we received three proposals for this. I know that in going back and forth in emails with you, Ms. Judd, I recognize some of the proposals that were submitted. I was a little unsure how to move forward today because the one that we're approving today is something like 25% more than the next proposal that was submitted. But I know that Placeworks is in high regards when it comes to our staff and just public government. And we need to make sure we have the highest level of plan to get the action that we need. We've been getting behind when it comes to housing, and we need to get ahead. And so I just wanted to put that out there for transparency purposes. But I am going to give my approval for this to move forward. I think that we need to have the best and do the best in order to get the best. So I just wanted to make that statement, and thank you for bringing this to us. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anybody in the board chambers or Zoom wish to speak on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
There's nothing further, Chair. Move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Placeworks for the not-to-exceed amount of $253,520 for the Lake County Housing Action and Implementation Plan Consulting Services and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to working together.
Thank you, Ms. West. All right, 7.2, "Consideration of the Classification, Compensation, Recruitment, and Retention Committee, 2023-24 Reclassification Cycle Findings and Recommendations." And Ms. Samick. And Mr. Carter. She's right behind you. Free-wheel motion.
Good morning. Pam Samick, Director of Human Resources. And today, we're here to present the recommendations from the Classification and Compensation Committee for reclassification requests for 2324 cycle findings. The Class and Comp Committee met per our policy outlined in the Personnel Manual, which was established in 2010. We reviewed seven departments' requests, who submitted 33 requests. We summarized those requests in this board summary here. And so we can go through each one of the requests and the recommendations for the assessor recorder. We reviewed his request, and the committee made a unanimous vote to deny this request since it was strictly a salary request and not a reclassification request. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them and ask for questions, or do you want to?
I didn't want to be rude and interrupt, but before we get too deep into the conversation, I know in having conversations with the admin staff and Ms. Samick, I feel like a lot of this is closed-session type of material where we are, if we have questions, if we're looking to change things, if we're looking to, that we would be negotiating in public. And I want to also put in my secondary concern that I'd like to see a review of what is Classification, Compensation, Recruitment, and Retention Committee because I feel that a large percentage, from my perspective, is what belongs in closed session, where we should be having those deeper dive conversations where we're not putting it out in public of this is what is being offered, and this is what we're saying yes or no to, or making changes on the fly to. So I have some concerns with the process. And I, again, feel that if any of us have questions or any of us want to make changes to what is being proposed, that we are, again, negotiating in public and not engaging with our union groups where changes will have impacts to the contract we have with our unions. And not sure if board members want to speak to that, and if there's a consensus to keep going, then that's the consensus to keep going.
May I just-
Please.
Say that this is the process that we've had in place since 2010. We have always brought these requests to the board, and the board has approved, based on the committee recommendations. If the board doesn't agree with the committee recommendations, they have, in this format, made requests for changes. And then, following the board meeting, we generally do the meet and confer where necessary. Unless it's a management role, then that's not necessary.
And definitely not saying that the CCRR is not following the policies that have been set in place. I'm evolving in my thought process on this subject, and just wanted to at least express it and want to hear from my colleagues as to their positions on if we continue with the conversation today, move this to closed session, or parts of this to closed session. But I do feel uncomfortable with the discussion. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the Chair expressing those concerns. And I appreciate the process that's been in place since 2010. I can only express my own confusion at times with that process and/or concerns that resulted from that process. I know when we went over these various proposals, it was a fairly long meeting, and toward the end of it, you know, I'll fess up. I expressed some of my frustrations with having a full understanding of the process, not just for myself, but also on behalf of department heads that are trying to follow that process, get some forward momentum. And I believe this whole process is tied to budget and trying to lock in some position allocations before they bring back a budget request. That said, this is tied to a budget thing. So, you know, I'm hesitant to pull it because I want to see forward progress on the stuff that did get approved. So I just leave it at that. One complicating factor in this review, and perhaps you can speak to this, Ms. Samick, is this ongoing Class and Comp study that's going to be coming down later this year. But that will take place after budget. So here we have a process that's focused just on what can we get done before we have to put in our budget request for any changes in my position allocations versus a longer-term approach about how we do this. So just-
Right, and the committee voted based on the policy. So again, it's got to be a reclassification, which means the position changed. Therefore, it merits a salary adjustment. If it's not, that's just a salary request, and that's not what the committee was put together to do.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I agree with Pam's statements. You know, this has been the process we've been working through since I've been on the Class and Comp year with the board, and this has been the process. So for myself today, I'm ready to move forward, hear these items all the way through, at least this item that we're talking about today, and, you know, continue the process. What we want to do is make sure that we support the committee, the work that they're doing to bring it to the board and follow the steps that have been put in place. So, you know, from my standpoint, I'm ready to move forward. I don't have the same concerns as you, Bruno, but, you know, if Lloyd was to say that, you know, there was a process that needed to be done in a different manner, but this is the one that we've been following when we've done either letters or we've done support, opportunities to go back to the unions and talk to them with changes. And we have made changes right here when we're having open discussions about that. So I'm ready to move forward today.
Mr. Guentavano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So under Government Code Section 54957.6, it is permissive. It does provide a permissive language for the board to have that option to hold these discussions regarding salaries, salary schedules, and compensations, so on and so forth. Scope of representation, as referenced in the statute, to, that the board may hold those in closed session. So it is permissive whether to hold it in closed session or in open session. And that would be up to your board to decide. open session, and that would be up to your board to decide.
Thank you.
If, if it goes to closed session, how, what, how does this affect the timeline?
It would extend it out by however long we come back. These considerations for the departments that we made recommendations for would be in their budget upcoming, because they're going to pay for any salary increases with budget adjustments.
Okay.
So this wouldn't go into effect until July 1, so if it went into closed session in a week or two, it should not affect that unless the decision is reversed, because the departments have already been informed. It has been temporary, you know, partially approved, waiting on the board decision. So it likely has already been submitted with their budget for July 1. And if your board changes a decision, it would, we would adjust the budgets, but that's still plenty of time before June presentation. Just early May, please, at the latest.
And, and just to also express, one of my concerns is, other than the changing of classification, or the changing of salaries that is presented to us, or the salaries of the class, new classifications, there is no impact to budget that's provided to us. We're saying yes to something without actually understanding how it impacts the budget. We're asking a budget to be created once the impact have been approved. And typically, I would assume we check the impact before we say yes, and there's no dollar amounts other than just the salaries themselves.
We have not looked at that specifically, because that's not the main goal of the CCRR. That's whether it's the right classification for the duties, more than whether or not we can afford, let's say, the two-grade change. Now, if the board does approve of, at least in concept, we can come back with the, the cost estimates. I will say that from the initial glance, there is not a huge cost estimate on the CCRR-approved items.
Thank you.
And can I say one more thing?
Please.
Related to closed or not, the reclassification items, I wouldn't think should need to go into closed. I know Chair Sabate and I don't necessarily agree on this completely, but the reclassifications don't really need to go into closed. But if you go into the items that we have denied because they don't belong with the CCRR, like the first one, if there's wanting any changes for like that one specifically that doesn't fall in the CCRR realm, that's where close would be necessary.
CAO Parker?
Hi, yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to make a recommendation, even though you didn't ask for it yet.
Please, we could always use help here.
But given our length of the four candidates we have coming in for the interviews, beginning at 1 o'clock, I'm hoping to, can we take this up next week, where we're not interviewing five different candidates, and give it the time needed to further explore, and time for staff to put something together for the board?
If that is the will of the board, I don't want to just say yes by myself. I'm in agreement of that. I see at least two other heads nodding yes. Okay, that seems to I, I don't know that we were planning to finish that part of the discussion quite yet. I would love to see it in closed, personally, and I guess I'll ask the rest of the board.
I'm fine with it being open.
I'm fine with open also.
Okay, then I guess that would come back in open the following week, or when staff is ready.
But I will have some calculations for you to, so that you are aware of the actual true impact as well.
Thank you.
No motions needed, or? And just ask Lloyd.
Have a comment?
And so essentially, it would be a direction to staff to, which would not require a motion in this instance.
So we have direction to staff to come back in open session with a little bit further information. All right, thank you. And let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on the continuation of this item. I see no hands in the chambers, or anyone walking up to the microphone, and no hands in Zoom, and so we'll go ahead and close this item and take it back up at a future time. Thank you. Item 7.3, Consideration of the Following Advisory Board Appointments, Heritage Commission and Glenbrook Cemetery District. We have one applicant for each, and are there any comments on any of the applicants? I do want to say, I'm going to speak with Director Ewing. I don't need a consensus. I want to check in where he is first. The Heritage Commission is a little confusing, in the sense that we are identifying districts, but when you read the actual definition, or the last amendment to the resolution of creating the Heritage Commission, it speaks to the requirements of being part of the Schoolhouse Museum, Historical Society, Genealogy, the Lakeport, or the Lake County Museum, and I forget, I think the fifth one is Middletown Museum. And so it, it's almost like there's multiple layers, and I don't think that we've been layering our membership. I think we can, but I think we need to, I'm going to ask some questions, just to make sure that we're, we're doing what, what actually is within that resolution that has created the Heritage Commission. But other than that, I'm ready to, to move forward, especially since Rose Davidson does identify with the genealogy. There's Supervisor Green?
Well, I guess there is a category where we could kind of reverse engineer an appropriate appointment, but going to the broader issue of the Heritage Commission, as it's written in the bylaws, yeah, it's, it, there's a confluence of two basic ideas. One is adequate representation for operation of county museums. The broader mission has more to do with the preservation of historical landmarks, and it, it's a bit of a mess the way it's set up. And I guess my personal preference would be, and I don't know who to volunteer for this on task, is let's, let's fix the composition before we start plugging people in there, because it's going to be really hard to fully populate this commission as it is currently constituted. And I don't want to raise somebody's hopes on that we're getting one appointment done, and I have 12 others to do, or whatever we need to do to get this thing up and running. So that, that's just my request. I don't want to just plug in an appointment because we have an application, knowing there's a bigger issue that needs to be fixed.
So that, just a quick clarification, this would be member number four. There's already three members that have applied and been approved. The committee is seven, so this actually gives them a quorum, with the belief that since they have a quorum, they could begin due to lack of more application. But I also believe that, Johanna, correct me if I'm wrong, you've received one other application, so that could potentially be member number five. So I, I don't think we're, I think it's been a while to fill up the Heritage Commission in order to get it going, but I don't think we are at a standstill where nothing can happen. So I just wanted to at least let you know that there is a quorum at this moment if we approve this one. There's nothing further. Let's open it up for public comment. I see none from the chamber, and none in the Zoom room. Let's do one at a time. Motion on the Heritage Commission.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Rose Davidson, new applicant. Oh, it says Lake County Genealog, Genealogical Society. So it's actually the Heritage Commission, right? District Four? Did that work, or no?
Second.
If that was to the Heritage Commission?
Yeah, Heritage Commission.
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Next, we have Glenbrook Cemetery.
I move that we approve Harry Deffenbaugh to the Glenbrook Cemetery District One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And let's go ahead and finish up with our weekly calendars. Who's ready?
Finish the, I'll go first.
Please.
Finish the meeting today. Tomorrow have the LTA Executive Committee meeting down in Lower Lake, and then also have on Thursday, the Disaster Council here in board chambers. And then CAO on Saturday. On Sunday, I will be attending Mike Thompson's ravioli dinner. Sorry to reach out. I guess I'm serving food as every year, so probably everybody else will be hit up too. So anyway, we'll do that, and then back here on the 25th for our regular board meeting.
Tomorrow, hopefully finishing up on jury duty. Thursday, hope to poke in a continuum of care. And then in the afternoon, we will probably meet for Emergency Medical Care Committee. It will have to be on an informal basis because of Brown Act issues. And then next Monday, meeting with CAO Parker, and that's about all I have.
Can you repeat the Brown Act issue?
We didn't get the agenda posted timely.
After today's meeting, I'm going to Sacramento for CSAC. I have my Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resource Policy Committee meeting in the afternoon, but we are going to be meeting with Senator McGuire and Assemblymember Agar Curry's staff. Prior to that, I'm not able to spend the week, so I'm coming home because I've got my area plan meetings. I had one last night. Kelseyville is Wednesday night. Thursday, Disaster Council, and then the, I'm sorry, I skipped. Oh, no, that was Wednesday, yeah. So I'm going to leave CSAC to be back for the Kelseyville Area Plan Meeting. Then Thursday, Disaster Council and the Cobb Area Plan Meeting. Friday, I have, we have the RCRCP GNE meeting.
Yeah.
I feel like there's something else in the afternoon that I've forgotten about. I am not making the ravioli feed this weekend because it's race season, and that's what I'm doing instead, so I'll miss you guys. And then Monday, I'm back here. I have my meeting with CAO Parker in the morning, a rescheduled NCO board meeting, and then back on Tuesday.
Vice Chair?
Yes. Yeah, there we go. Just wanted to actually report about something last week that I was able to join at the last minute. We did meet with Cecilia Agar Curry about Potter Valley last Friday. Apparently, she was scheduled to meet with the tribes in their work with the hitch. So they started in Upper Lake and went throughout the county to different spots to show Cecilia Agar Curry what, what work the tribes were doing in the creeks with the hitch and, and all of that. And so was able to be a part of that, and, and she seemed pretty excited about it, and obviously probably going to see her this weekend. I'm actually waiting for confirmation from my wife about the ravioli feed this Saturday, but I'm pretty sure I've been asked to, and so I think I'm, I think I'm slated, but
Yes, I told Brad last night you could serve.
Yeah, so, so I got the West Region Town Hall tomorrow, got a meeting in Lucerne with some constituents. Thursday, also afternoon, EPA Farm, Ranch, and Rural Federal Advisory Committee, PG&E meeting. I also think that you'll, you will both be at CSAC, so I know that Friday, they had asked me, I think, here in Lakeport, at an event to do a land acknowledgement or something like that.
I'll be here.
You'll be here too?
I'm only going for, I'm coming back Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
For the equity
Yeah, yeah, so I, so I, working that in. And then Monday, CAO meeting, and then we have the AAA Governing Board. That, that was rescheduled to Monday, right?
Uh, is it? Oh, yeah, it's not NCO, it's AAA.
And of course, I think Proms is the Saturday for Upper Lake High School, so, yeah, in Upper Lake, behind the area we just talked about today, on Pitt and Lane, so. Yeah, anyhow, that's what I'll be doing. I also wanted to mention this document that was given. It's a Lake and Mendocino County Resource Directory for Older Adults. Holly Brownfield, the Community Resources Specialist, and it says also Financial and Advocate Support. It was Lake County Silver Foundation put some effort into this, and it is available not only here in the admin office. I think they're going to be distributed out to the senior centers as well, throughout the whole county. And so, you looking out for these? It's, it's a real good book. I know that at times, a lot of folks, they can get online, but sometimes you just need it in hand. And so glad to see that that, this was done, and appreciate the work that's been done by everyone that put the effort into this.
Thank you for that. So I don't have much, other than I will be leaving this evening, similar to Supervisor Pysko, to be in Sacramento, meeting with our state representatives on Wednesday. I have the Administration of Justice Committee meeting that's happening on Thursday, and then other committee meetings that I will be engaged with. I do have a, I will be taking part in the KPFZ Board Agenda Meeting on the evening of the 18th. And other than that, just coming home on Friday, and I am going to send my apologies to Congressman Thompson, as, since I'm being absent away from my family so much this week, I'm going to choose to be with my family on Sunday instead. And then I'll be back here preparing for our Tuesday meeting. And with that, we will be going into closed session. You have a redo?
Not a redo, just I forgot. Saturday, Kelseyville High School, there was a mural dedication, just beautiful art. Supervisor Pysk and I were both able to attend that ceremony, and I found it very moving, and I also found the artwork very compelling. And if you haven't driven by the school recently, please do. It's visible from the street. And I understand the elementary school got six panels of artwork as well that would be placed there. So I just want to do a shout-out to Kelseyville High School, and all the people that helped with that project, the Native American Club, and the board for being supportive of it. It was a really, really good job.
It was two Sundays ago.
Two Sundays?
It all blends together, and you weren't here the week before, so you had to say.
That's right.
That would be Katie Ray. She's amazing at what she does, and we do call that a redo. 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Social Services Director, Appointment of Social Services Director. 8.2, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Public Works Director, Appointment of Public Works Director. 8.3, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Water Resources Director, Appointment of Water Resources Director. With that, we'll take a lunch, and we will come back to our closed session at 1:00 PM. Oh, 12:45? We will be back at 12:45 for closed session.